She said she was not making it very sure.
She said they didn't say anything.
Are the lights on?
Yes. Lights?
My light's broken.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Tuckerden Borough Council on December sixteenth. Calvin, would you read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Yes, forbidden of the Open Public Meetings Act was published or was complied with as published, uh, whether it's published in the VGA and the FBRC press statement in time being takes for reading.
Fine, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reeland.
President.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Colangelo.
Here.
Mr. Deamore.
Here.
Mr. Dupree.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we stand for a quiet seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. Yeah, next this presentation, which we got none, but I'm going to ask Calvin, is the light, are the lights on?
No, if the tree's not, but...
Okay, glad I answered everybody's question. Thank you for going out and checking on that. Uh, number, uh, number six on our agenda is legislation. Councilman Reeland.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I have nothing official this evening, just would like to wish everyone a happy, happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
All right, thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Set the stage for us all here. All right, next is finance. Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor.
I do have four resolutions this evening, um, but I wanted to address or talk about two things before I get to the resolutions. Um, hey, Calvin, thank you for going down and looking. Uh, I have been in touch with Ocean County. The breaker box is inside the county building there for the light on lake. Um, after the heavy rains the other day, I'm guessing water got into a plug or something somewhere and popped it. I cannot get into the building, so I've asked the county. They were supposed to go today to check on it, but maybe with the weather being bad, they didn't go out on the lake to, to see as well. But, um, yes, we are aware that the tree is out and hopefully tomorrow it will be back up and on.
Thank you.
Number two is, uh, a week and a half ago, I attended a summit presented by Rutgers University for the beneficial use of dredge material for marsh restoration. Um, it was an eight-hour summit and there was probably about sixty to seventy attendees there. Uh, I'm happy to say I was the only, I guess you'd say, elected official that attended. Um, one of the big kind of conversations that was going on is getting municipal involvement. They want to get all the towns involved in the summit every time. It was, you know, hand up and we're here and we're ready. Um, there's been kind of a, a change in philosophy with the DEP and even fish and wildlife where for such a long time, it's been, let's do these programs and let's focus on doing the least harm to everything. There's been a shift lately into instead of doing the least harm, what can we do that is the most good, uh, for marsh restoration? Part of that being is, uh, thin-layer deposition, pumping dredge materials that are already here, out back onto the marshes, doing plantings, encouraging growth. And, um, it was, like I said, it was eight hours, but there was a lot of really good information. I met a lot of people. I met people from the DOT, uh, again, DEP, Virginia Tech was there, from Fortsight. There was a lot of fish and wildlife. There was a lot of, uh, engineers there, uh, to kind of go over it. Again, one of the biggest issues is funding these projects. And then a couple of days after that, there was the announcement, um, I saw on Jeff Van Drue's Facebook of the Coastal Resiliency Act, uh, is going through now to try to pass into law, which is going to free up more money to do these kind of projects. So again, I'm trying to keep Tuckerden at the forefront of this, um, specifically work on Thompson's Creek, King Fisher Lagoon due to the marsh restoration there using the dredge material that's easily available right there and hydraulically pumping makes it, you know, not so costly as mechanically dredging it. Um, I'm attending another follow-up, they call it a coffee talk, in January with the, um, Coastal Resiliency Commission, and I, that is headed up by, I believe, um, Peshaw Kusso Branch and Lisa Armular. I think I've already signed up and registered for that, to attend that. So I want to just kind of keep Tuckerden at the forefront of this and hopefully we can, you know, be kind of the guinea pig for, for what's going on. Um, DOT actually was very promising, uh, listening to Mike talk from there. They're, they're ready to go. They just need places to put the dredge material as they dredge. And that's been kind of their biggest hangup over the last fifteen, twenty years. It's, there's nowhere to put it, so they can't really just cut through and dredge. But, um, using it for marsh restoration gives them a place to put it and put it instantly so they can move from one project to the next, to the next, and move efficiently through. So a lot of good stuff came out of that. I'm more than happy to share more information. I shared it with the Paradise Cove and Uplanders Association at their Christmas party. Um, I'll reach out to the TBA, uh, for their next meeting. I'll share more details on that. But if anybody wants more information on that, or, um, even see what they can do for who to contact to help, I'm more than happy to give a list of names that, that I got from there.
Thank you.
And that's it for that update, so I'll get into resolutions. Uh, my first resolution this evening is authorizing the transfers, or authorizing transfers between the 2024 budget appropriations. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing transfers between the 2024 budget appropriations, and I move this resolution second.
We have a motion in a second on this resolution. I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next resolution is for the payment of claims for this period, for this month. Uh, we have four hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents, uh, going out in bills this month. Of that, three hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred five dollars and forty-two cents is for Tuckerden Elementary School. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing payment of claims in the amount of four hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, forty-four cents. I move this resolution second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, uh, to, uh, pay the, pay the bills. Uh, does anyone have any questions on the evening? All right, same number, roll call vote, please. Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
My next resolution is for the release of a maintenance bond. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of the letter of credit maintenance guarantee in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and eight cents for site improvements on block forty-nine lots four, six point oh one, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-seven. I move this resolution second.
All right, we have a motion in a second on this resolution. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
My next resolution is granting, uh, one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2024 taxes due on a property granted, the one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption, and refund the resulting credit balance. When I move this resolution second.
All right, I have a motion in a second for this resolution. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy and Safe New Year. And I'll have something that committee members.
All right. Next is Public Works, Water and Sewer, Councilman Colangelo.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. One resolution this evening has to do with Change Order Number One for the Marine Street Sidewalk Project, which falls under the CDVG grants that we received, and it goes back to 2022. Uh, the Public Works Yard will be closed Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, and Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. So pickup on those two days will be two days later than normal. Uh, the Public Works Yard will be closed Monday, January twentieth in honor of, uh, Martin Luther King. And finally, just a reminder that the Public Works Yard is closed Sundays only, and that already started, but it reopens again on April the sixth. I have a resolution for the Borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing execution of Change Order Number One to the 2022 CDVG sidewalk improvement on Marine Street. Uh, the 2022 CDVG sidewalk improvements was originally awarded for forty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and that new amount will be forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars, which is an increase of three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and eighteen cents. I move this resolution second.
All right, I have a motion in a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
I'd also like to wish everyone the best of holidays and be safe. Thank you, Your Honor, that's all I have.
All right, fine, thank you very much. Moving on, Public Buildings and Grounds and Community Affairs, Councilman Deamore.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have nothing to say this evening, but Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Do you have a resolution?
I have a resolution there.
No, it's, you know what? I looked at the original and it wasn't there.
You mean how?
No. Um, okay, I got it. All right, so, um, we sold the Pierce Fire Truck. Uh, I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing sale of improperly owned property sold at public corruption. My second.
Hey, Sarah Oshin, a second. Uh, as presented here, roll call vote, please. Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
I'm staying.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes. That's all I have.
Yes, all right, fine. Thank you very much. Moving on to, um, Administration and Regulation.
Thanks, Your Honor. I have four items this evening. The first thing, the approval of the minutes in the following meeting. Any council member have any exception from the last month's minutes? There being none, I move that we accept the notice as written.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to, uh, accept the minutes as presented. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I have a resolution, the Borough of Tuckerden County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing execution of a shared service agreement with the County of Ocean for animal facility services. I move that, uh, this resolution to be adopted.
My second.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. I'll have this resolution. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, Your Honor, I had the construction and zoning enforcement report for the month of November. Uh, rentals, we had six, resales, five, zoning, thirteen, uh, inspections performed were thirty-three, bulkheads were two, plumbing fifteen, electric sixteen, complaints received two, zoning thirty-four, uh, violations sent were three, working violations were also three, uh, violations cleared were two. Uh, we received sixteen phone requests, um, in the month of November, and then two over requests. I also had the, uh, fire and EMS reports for the month of November. We had, uh, eight fire calls, thirty-six EMS calls. And, uh, for everyone's information, the Borough 2025 fire plans, the pre-plans, will be in full compliance by January first. And, uh, also, I hope everybody had a chance to see Santa come around and visit us the Sunday before last. Uh, he came down every street in Tuckerden. And with that, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and whatever you celebrate, have a very happy and safe holiday this evening.
Thank you very much. Next is Law and Public Safety. Councilman Peterson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have new resolutions tonight, but I have the, uh, monthly activity report for the Police Department for November. Uh, calls for service were two hundred and forty-nine, arrests were ten, motor vehicle stops were a hundred and thirty-nine, motor vehicle summons were seventy-three, motor vehicle accidents were fifteen, medical was twenty-one, and suspicious persons and vehicle checks were thirteen. Uh, that's all I have, Your Honor. And I also want to wish everybody Happy Holidays.
All right, uh, thank you very much. So now it's my turn, and I have a resignation to read, uh, from Judge Snyder. Do I have to read the whole thing?
No, just you make a motion, have your motion in.
Okay, uh, so I need a resolution to, uh, accept that. I just want to read the second paragraph here. Uh, as this year comes to an end, I must step down as judge, not, and not complete the third year of my term, I will instead begin to, by retirement. So, um, and he, he also recommended, uh, Brian Wilkie Esquire as our next municipal court judge, and, uh, I will be reading his, um, appointment next, but I need someone to...
I move that we accept the letter resignation.
Second.
And thank the judge for this one.
Okay, all right, so I have a motion and a, and seconds that we accept this resignation. So, uh...
Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, and I wish him the best in retirement.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I will send him a note, um, with your comments. And now I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Brian Wilkie Esquire as our, uh, municipal court judge.
I move that resolution second.
All right, and we have a motion and a second, gentlemen. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Reeland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Deamore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, all right, Mr. Dupree. So, uh, Mr. Martin, do you have anything for us this evening?
Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Okay, thank you very much. Matt Clark?
Uh, as well. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, uh, everybody be safe.
All right, fine, so I'm going to come back to you. It's your turn now, again.
So Tuckerden's Pride and Celebrations Committee held Yule Christmas in Tuckerden on, uh, December seventh. We couldn't have asked for better weather that day. Um, the, the turnout was fantastic, and I wanted to take a minute to thank everybody, uh, that participated, from the Methodist Church during the live nativity to the, the Pinelands Thesians, uh, group. They were awesome. If you didn't get a chance to see them, they had, um, fifteen of their actors were dressed in full Dickens, uh, outfits and in character for, I think, eight hours they did, out walking around. Um, they sang a couple carols and stuff. It was, it was a really neat addition this year to it, and they've already requested to be part of it again next year. I try to get even more kids, and they're going to work in more, uh, carols and stuff into the, the routine. Um, but all in all, I, as always, I get, I'm overworking the horse and carriage ride, so I don't really get to go see most of what else is going on. I didn't get, get to get any clam chowder, uh, from that sort of society, but I heard from everybody that was involved that they had a really, really nice turnout on Saturday. Uh, I did think that the, the tree lighting on the lake was really cool, went off nicely. I wish the tree was still lit, but we'll get it relit. Um, again, no need to text me and tell me that the tree's out. I know it's out. Um, and, uh, yeah, it was a very nice event. Our next event for Pride and Celebration will be on New Year's Day, January first. We'll be doing the bonfire behind the Methodist Church that we were supposed to do for, um, Halloween. And I was rescheduled for that. And then, uh, I did just get a text message that it is all set and good. So also on January first, uh, the Fourth of July, um, fireworks committee is going to be putting on a fireworks show at six PM out over the lake. So, um, again, that is January first. It is not New Year's Eve, so don't show up New Year's Eve and stand out there. It's New Year's Day. At six o'clock, there will be a fireworks show out over the lake. And then that is all I have.
Oh, that's, that's the one that's going through, six PM. We put a lot of time and effort into seeing that this gets, if this happens, so, uh, please come out and feel around and dress warm if it stays cold.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, was, are there any other committee, commission, board reports? All right.
I move to open the public forum, second.
All right, I have a motion in a second to open the public forum. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please remember, we have a five-minute rule. Uh, so, we'll have someone to say something.
Good evening, Mr. Egger.
Aye. Uh, I got one twenty-one, well, in terms of Tuckerden. Um, as I put in the email after last night, I made a mistake. Uh, there was two first aid calls at that house I mentioned over my nails, and he went over to help my both of them. But it was the respiratory, not the one where he had two right down, where the police officer laid the body. So I just wanted to let you know it's a wrong call, but it did happen, okay? Uh, next thing I'd like to address, somebody sent me a copy of some of the minutes from Tucker Beach Association, and it said that Council Mike Dupree said that the, uh, fire, the state shut down a firehouse. That's not true. The state doesn't have the authority to shut down a firehouse. The Borough did it because they got a letter saying, you know, things that said were unsafe. The state did not shut down a firehouse. It also says that Mike Dupree told, um, certifications were not followed from the state. Well, our certifications, we are business subject. Like they claimed, I did not have IMS two hundred, which is an instant command certification. A lot of people have that. I have certificates, said I took the class in the three. I have IMS three hundred and four hundred, which two hundred is a prerequisite. There's no question I took the class, but the state record-keeping is something. By the same token, we, uh, were requested like I did before in March, and nobody in Parker Town was qualified to respond to fires at that time, according to the same state stats that you cited us on, just for your information, okay? So, um, I think you need to go take back what you said there, or spreading false information, okay, Mike?
I was putting out what I was told, especially from the state. He did not have the...
The state, the state did not shut us down. The Borough did. Well, that's a false statement. If you don't know what you're talking about, give your mouth shut, please.
I, I was getting the same thing, Mr. Egger. You have spread so much information and that you're...
That's correct.
Oh, you come up here and you yell at every person. You accuse us of being corrupt. It's time for self-reflection. All I can say...
Dude, you find it, drop it. I mean, charge me, Mike.
Well...
Okay, if I ain't done my five minutes, you get out of here, Tom. Uh, what I wanted to say about this, um, ladder truck you sold, I'm glad you did pretty good. From what I understand, we got over one point three million for that, the high bid, is that correct?
Yes.
Over one point three million. Now, back at the beginning of the year, when officials from Lacy got hold of me, wanted to know how much I wanted for the stuff on the truck that I own, so they could include it in their bid. And at that time, I was told the Borough was going to pass it over to Lacy for what they had in it, which was well under a million dollars. And I sent you the stuff on one being sold that's older than ours for one point two million. So I'm glad that you went out to bid and did what you did for the good of the town. And if that helped to make, if what we sent you helped make the town extra three hundred some thousand dollars, that's good.
First off.
Yep.
I will...
Okay, that's why I get done, not done yet.
Okay.
Okay, now, we had a letter from your attorney that you were going to transfer title to rescue truck tonight to Parker Town. Okay, I didn't hear that happen or anything, but I don't know what you're going to get for it for transferring the title. And again, I just want to let you know, same company was here to bid on our truck, but didn't bid because the bidding got too high. They had a truck, three years older than ours, similar body style. It's a freight line chassis. Ours is Kenworth. Has a lot of same equipment on, has a, a, uh, generator, has a cascade system. They were asking ninety thousand. It says here it's sold. I don't know if they got quite that, but I just want to let you know that the size of these trucks may be more than what you think. And it might not be a good idea to transfer a rescue truck to Parker Town anyway, because they're dangerous. Several years ago, I got a call from the hospital that, "Oh, uh, chief, we're sorry, but we have to tell her. We think she already knows." Like, what are you talking about? "Oh, well, fire company accidentally cut her toe off in an accident. Well, it was Parker Town, not us." Okay, so, you know, if people are going to go around mistaking things in Tucker Beach Association and cut off people's toes, I don't really mind responding to my calls, okay? Enough said. Thank you very much.
He's finished. I would like to interject, Mayor.
Certainly, all right.
So, the sale of the fire truck has absolutely nothing to do with what Mr. Egger is saying. There was no deal in place with Lacy. Uh, by law, we have to put the fire truck out to bid. That was the plan. That was the plan the entire time, was to go out to bid to the highest bidder. So while he likes to stand up and say that, you know, this was all happening, there was no deal in place with Lacy. There was no sweetheart deal with our Borough Attorney's Office. Um, in fact, we had been in touch with many municipalities that were interested in the truck, that were initially giving way higher amounts than, than what he's trying to say, uh, Lacy was going to be behind it for. So that was absolutely one hundred percent not how that played out. It was going out to bid the entire time. Um, as far as, I will chime in on Mr. Dupree's statements at the Tuckerden Beach Association, since I was there and I actually heard, and I'm not reading what somebody else, second or third hand, is writing down. I believe, and I could be mistaken because it is going back a while, but I believe what Mr. Dupree said was that the Tuckerden Fire Department is shut down by no fault other than themselves. It was a letter that came from the state that recommended that they were not in compliance, and that is why we shut it down. So if the Tuckerden Beach Secretary writes down, Mr. Dupree says this, I don't know why you assume that that is a direct quote. I read their minutes. It's snippets. It is not a transcript. But you know that all too well, but it's easy enough for you to put it on Facebook like this guy's lying and this guy's saying it, much like how you say, "Councilman Martin said at a council meeting, if we don't resign, he's going to assess taxes on our building." Find me that. Find where I said that. If you don't resign...
Watch the video.
Find, find where you said, "If you don't resign, I am going to put taxes on your building, and I will resign from this council."
You're going to revoke our tax exempt status. What did the leadership of the fire company resign?
Go ahead, find it and bring it forward.
Jenny will find it for us.
You put, you put forward that, and I will resign from this council, because it was two completely separate meetings.
Jenny, we want to get that out.
It was two completely separate meetings where I said that, and if I'm wrong, I will eat my words. But I went back and I watched them, and they're separated by almost six months, the two meetings that I said it. But it doesn't fit what you want to put out on social media. And that's all I have there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your Honor, I'd like to, just real quick, uh, Mr. Egger is notorious. He's lifelong member of the, the fire company, Tuckerton, not Parker Town. Like, he told POCIA, he filed a false report with POCIA, which got turned down, um, with notwithstanding the actual effect.
report with Piers, which got turned down, with notwithstanding the actual facts. He misrepresented himself as being a lifelong member of Parker Town, which he never was nor never will be.
That's a lie. Send a copy of his certificate.
You haven't proven anything to anybody, except the fact that you call every one of us corrupt. If you have facts that we are corrupt, bring it forward, press charges, if not, go on with your-
You're gonna say I'm corrupt, I want to see that-
I didn't say you're corrupt. I didn't say that. You called us corrupt, we are not. We are doing the best we can for this town, and you have nothing better to do than come up here and blow out all kinds of misinformation, you tell people, you hand-feed them what you want to know, and you say, oh, look at this, look at this, they did this. The fact of the matter is, it was what Tuckerton didn't do that got them removed as a fire department. End of story. It doesn't matter-
I suppose the bills are a great thing to lie to, huh?
It's my time. You had your time. You had your chance to do what was right by the state, and guess what? Lo and behold, you didn't do it, and that's why there is no Tuckerton Fire Company. It's not because of anybody on here, it's because of you. You failed to do the right thing. You failed to do what every other fire company in the area has done. And to add matters worse, what did you go and do? You went and turned in every single fire company in the area for what you did, and guess what? The state found no issue with any other fire company except Tuckerton. That's on you. And that's, Your Honor, that's all I have to say.
All right, fine, thank you. Appreciate it. And anyone else? Mr. Solomon?
Now that the storm's over, I just want to thank you and wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thanks, Brian, for coming to our meeting and tell us about the tragedy and what's going on. I have some gifts for everybody on council, except for Brian, because he already got his. These are made by one of our neighbors. They handled the party, and it's something, some of you may not know, I mean, you know it's on the back of my jacket, but at the end of Thompson's Creek, there's a tripod that one of our deceased neighbors made years ago, and we are constantly putting the American flag up. So they made these little Christmas ornaments. Everybody gets one. The tripod. And so I say Merry Christmas, he'd be used. Has Thompson's Creek on it. These are special for everybody after the party, I had to ask for more.
Thank you.
But Merry Christmas. Sorry, Jenny, I gotta go to that deal with-
No, you're good.
I would've got one. But there you go, Merry Christmas. A lot more positive note.
Jenny can't put it on the posters.
Thanks, Paul, and thanks to your association.
All right, like, sound here, like, there are the most-
You guys at her.
Darcy.
You know, I've been ready to get up there. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone, and Happy Birthday to our mayor. Okay, thank you.
Ah.
Good evening, Mr. Martin, how are you today?
Way Martin, one eighty-one, Santa Cruz, sort of, Tuckerton, the great borough of Tuckerton, New Jersey. Took me several years to get out of Little Lake Harbor, but I made it.
And we welcome you.